I'd like to call the council meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Hodel. Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Foley.
Here.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Mayor Pauli.
Here. Okay, go on, please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation by Alderman Clark.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you, dear heavenly father, for the blessings you have given our great city. Now we humbly ask for another blessing. We ask that you bless the city council and the leaders of this city with wisdom. The wisdom to guide our young people away from guns, away from drugs, and just find other solutions to the problems that they face. And we ask everything in your son's name. Amen.
The minutes of the meeting on February 20th, 2017.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
The motion is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Update Rock Island, I have five items tonight. First off, the 2017 St. Patrick's Day Parade will be Saturday, March 18th, starting at 11:00 a.m., beginning at 23rd Street and 4th Avenue in Rock Island. Parade floats, bands, vehicles, and walkers will head through downtown Rock Island, across Centennial Bridge, and continue its course through downtown Davenport. Visit www.ridistrict.com for updates. Item number two, after the St. Patrick's Day Parade is concluded, stay in Rock Island and enjoy the post-parade facilities. Some of the various outdoor festivities include Steve's Old Time Tap on 17th Street, between 2nd and 3rd Avenue, from 9:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m. Kevin O's Hilltop Tap, 1228 30th Street, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Gunche's Post Party will be at 2107 4th Avenue, from 8:00 a.m. to midnight. And Daughery Factory's Shamrock Shakedown will be on 2nd Avenue, between 18th and 19th Street, from 9:00 a.m. until 12:30 a.m. Sunday morning. Third item. Community Crime Prevention Partnership Meeting. These educational meetings are intended to strengthen existing partnerships with the citizens of Rock Island so that we can continue to look at ways to prevent crime and improve services to the community. The topic for this meeting will be criminal investigations. It will be on Wednesday, March 15th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Rock Island Police Department Community Room, located at 1212 5th Avenue in Rock Island. Contact 732-2677 for more information. Whether you're a Chicago Cubs fan or a St. Louis fan, you're sure to have a good time at this Cubs Cardinal baseball game on Wednesday, April 5th, at Busch Stadium. The Rock Island Park and Recreation Trip will leave at 6:00 a.m. for a 12:45 p.m. game. Bus will leave one and a half hours after the game is over. Cost is $115. Trip includes a seat on a deluxe motor coach and third baseline ticket to the game. Register online at www.rigov.org and click on E-Park. Call 732-7275 or stop by the Ryfack Park Office at 4303 24th Street, Rock Island. And finally, the 2017 Flower and Garden Show is coming to the Quad City Expo Center, March 24th through March 26th. Hours are Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Great fun and value for the whole family. Adult tickets are $8. Children of 6 to 15 are $1, and children under 6 are free. Senior day is Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., for $6. That's update Rock Island for this week. Okay, now I have a proclamation that I'm very happy to be able to present today for Senior Master Sergeant Sean Slavish Day. Now, this is a little bit late, actually the day was yesterday, but we were asked not to do this until after the event so they could have the festivities yesterday. So, sir, if you could come up to the podium, I'll read this out and bring it out to you. Whereas, Senior Master Sergeant Sean Slavish will be retiring from the Illinois National Guard after 30 years of dedicated service on March 5th, 2017. And whereas Sean Slavish's career began in 1987, and during his time he achieved a rank only achieved by 1.9% of those who serve in the Air Force. Deployed to...okay, how do you pronounce that?
Kurgastine.
Kurgastine, and also served as First Sergeant for a number of years. And whereas, during his service with the National Guard, Slavish has touched the lives of hundreds of airmen and has been a great mentor. And whereas, in addition to serving his country and the state of Illinois, he has served the city of Rock Island as a police officer for the past 24 years, achieving the rank of Sergeant there. And whereas, Senior Master Sergeant Sean Slavish is truly the epitome of a leader and model citizen. He has dedicated his life to serving his community, his state, and his country. Now therefore, identity Pauli Mayor of the city of Rock Island, proclaim Sunday, March 5th, 2017, as Senior Master Sergeant Sean Slavish Day in the city of Rock Island. And with that, I believe that gets a standing ovation, doesn't it, folks?
Yeah.
And I'm going to close the regular meeting, open a public hearing on a request from Letitia Talleferro for a special use permit to raise crops at 935 3rd Avenue on a western segment of the site, Zone B3, Community Business District, to construct a detached accessory hoop house 30-foot by 84-foot in the western segment of the site to be used for growing crops, to locate a 10-foot by 10-foot accessory stand adjacent to the hoop house for onsite sales during the warmer months, and to allow a freestanding sign at the western segment of the site. So, is there a representative here to talk about the project?
They're not here, may I speak for them?
Are you their representative? Okay, then you can speak for them.
My name is Ethel O'Malley.
Well, why don't you get up to the podium?
My name is Ethel O'Malley, I'm an architect in Rock Island, and I live at 2801 12th Avenue in Rock Island.
Okay.
Okay, I met the Talleferros last Saturday, and here they are. This is Mr. Eli Talleferro. Would you like to speak for you, on your behalf?
Good afternoon, sorry we're late.
You're going to speak now. Well, I forgot that I do have to swear you in, so if you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, begin.
Are there any questions that anyone has that I can answer first?
Well, questions come later. Right now, you just have to tell us your plan.
We've submitted a plan because we're going to do an organic garden, and our plans are to sell at the farmer's market and at the location. So, we've submitted several requests. We've received a grant through the FDA to purchase a hoop house, as most people know it. So, met a few times with some of the city leaders in conjunction with trying to bring it all to fruition. We've got approved for the grant for construction of the high tunnel. We've actually, when we first purchased the property, about a year after that, we purchased the adjoining lot. And so, last month, we submitted a request to have the two lots combined because that adjacent lot was a residential lot. So, in order to construct the hoop house, we needed the two lots as one because it couldn't cross the property lines. So, we had that approved through the city planning commission, if I'm not mistaken. So, our next step, and we submitted a request previously for the consideration of the application that we have forward tonight. So, we've met with Mr. Fryes and several of the other city leaders as far as the ordinances and codes. So, so far, everything we've attempted, we're up to par on all the codes. So, basically, the next step is with this final request, that'll allow us to go ahead and move forward with, we've been approved for the purchase of the equipment. So, we just need to finalize our last permit, and then we can start constructing the hoop house.
Any questions from council members?
I have two. Number one, and maybe this is a staff question, have all the neighbors been made aware of this, and have they been talked to, and are they on board?
Yes, letters were sent out, notifications, all the proper notifications were sent out by the city, and they were posted in the paper. There's also a public notice posted on our property on the street.
Okay.
There's actually, for the most part, theoretically, we own the whole block on that side.
I was just looking like the Ark home across the street, as long as they were wearing on board.
Yes.
You know, but, and this seems to be as high and good use for these pieces of property as any. The one thing that did catch my eye is the narrative said onsite sales will be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The staff recommendations take Saturday out of that. Is there a reason for that?
We hadn't had a chance to speak with Mr. Fryes, but we were hoping that that would be reconsidered because Saturday is inevitably, prospectively, our best day for business.
And I would agree with you. I was surprised that he gave you...
So, that was it, yes.
And, you know, and it's one of those things, just, I would, I'd just as soon give you the largest window, Monday through Sunday, whatever it is, knowing that you're not obligated to use all of them, but you can't go above and beyond.
Yes, and that was the only issue that we wanted to address was the hours because we would perspective like to have Saturday open.
But not Sunday?
No, not Sunday.
Okay.
No.
Chuck, what if I have a day off?
I know. I just, and just because you have, obviously, 8 through, 10 through, now...
So, let me ask this question, and maybe Chandler can ask or answer, or whoever. So, if you want to be open on Saturday, do we need to make an amendment to this? What do we need to do?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that was a recommendation, it wasn't set in stone.
We'll just make sure the motion, we'll just make sure the motion has the hours in there that...
Okay, because I'm fine with Saturday.
Do you want those hours to be 10 to 6, 8 to 5?
8 to 5, please.
8 to 5, okay. And then, you know, of course, 8 to 5 in the winter is one thing, and in the summer, that may come too early.
Yeah, and our biggest purpose for making all attempts to do it properly is because so many people grow gardens, and they sell, and they don't do it without a license, and they, you know, so we're trying to do it the correct way.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you're going to be a welcome addition, and you already are a good neighbor.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate that.
Let me...
Okay, so, when are you planning on starting this, and when will all be constructed?
Our biggest date for starting is in consideration of the vote for tonight because we're completely approved for the FDA grant. We've already visited the site that constructs the hoop house. It's in Dubuque, well, Dyersville, Iowa. So, it's a, just the matter of, once we have the approval, we didn't want to purchase $10,000 worth of equipment and then get a vote that says, no, we don't approve, so. Construction is basically contingent on tonight's decision.
So, as soon as possible?
Yes. Last week.
The hoop house you're buying, is it similar size to the one just north of you?
Similar. I think ours is about 10 feet larger in length, but it's, and ours is, not to put this in a bad way, a lot better made.
Well, I hope the plastic is, or the covering is, because it's lasted a couple of years, but they're having a little trouble with it right now.
Yeah, and that's part of the issues we've discussed with the city, and we're going to move to do a lot, a little better assembly and use a better material.
Good. Are you getting the hoop house in Dyersville, is that from Farm Tech?
Yes, from Farm Tech.
I got family up there.
Any other questions?
Sir, I'm just curious about your personal background with organic agriculture and your roots in this community. Are you new to this community?
I'm new to the community. We've lived in Iowa about six years, and I've owned that property almost four years. So, but I grew up, small town Virginia, and owned a farm all my life, and my wife, very, very familiar gardening. The greatest advantages now is going into organic gardening. There is so much more knowledge available, and there are so many more avenues. We've met probably eight or 10 people between Iowa and Illinois that are already in the perspective of organic gardening. So, and then the biggest benefit to doing it there is if you follow all the contingencies and have your inspections, after three years, you're certified as an organic garden. And, you know, from our perspective, it really brings a positive image to the city of Rock Island to have a true organic garden facility that's FDA-approved in the area.
Well, I just want to share my enthusiasm for your plan. I've been an avid organic gardener myself for many years, started when I was at Augustana College, and I've seen a lot of folks with a lot of sincerity push ideas like this, but you seem to really have your head in the right place and going through the motions the right way, and so I'm going to look forward to seeing your operation grow.
My wife is the, she's the brain, I'm the, I'm the pinky.
Thank you.
Let me say, for someone who grew up in the neighborhood, just two blocks away, and who, my mother still lives there on 12th Street and 2nd Avenue, I'm very happy to see the investment into the neighborhood, into what you're doing. I remember the old Rock Island pump buildings where you're at.
Yes, sir.
And they were downtrodden, and so I'm glad to see you guys have taken them on and are helping to rebuild that neighborhood along with ARC and other developments there. So, and this is a great, a great thing to have in that neighborhood, and I'm sure my mom will be very happy and will probably be one of your customers, so.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say briefly, I was very impressed with your presentation, and you're even smarter than you think since you gave your wife credit, so, you know, I, I'm excited for that neighborhood as well, so thank you for committing to Rock Island.
Yes, and we have some, some, a site plan if you guys don't have one.
Not a question, but a statement. And, yes, Chuck, it won't be open on Sunday because this is Minister Talleferro at my church, Olivet Baptist Church, and he will be there on Sunday mornings, and his wife.
All right, thank you. If you'd like to be seated, we'll go to the next phase.
There you go.
Okay, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this project? One more time, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? One more time, anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve the special use permit as recommended, subject to the stipulations stated in the report, with the exception that the hours of operation for onsite sales be limited to 8:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Alderman Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item number nine, I'm going to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Moti Singh for an amendment to an approved special use permit to change the name on the special use permit to Moti Singh, who will continue to operate a neighborhood grocery store at 507th Street. So, is there somebody here to speak for him? Okay, let's take this one step at a time now. Are you both going to be speaking?
You're going to be speaking.
You're just his backup? Okay, well, we're going to score you both in, just in case, okay?
Okay.
So, both of you raise your right hands. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
You do.
Very good, please begin.
Good evening, everybody. I'm trying to open a smaller grocery store in the corner over here. It was already a grocery store, small building, I think it had been closed for like two years, probably, three years. So, I'm trying to reopen it, only, I'm trying to change the name, and everything will be same in there, whatever the business was before.
Okay, so you're just trying to change the name, that's all?
Just to change the name.
Anything else?
Nothing else, that's all.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing done. If you'd like to be seated, please.
Good, thank you.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this project? One more time, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor? Hearing done, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing done, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendment to the special use permit as recommended, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 10, A through C.
Move to accept the reports unauthorized payments as recommended.
Second.
If a motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 11.
Claims for the weeks of February 17th through February 23rd in the amount of $219,096.75 on February 24th through March 2nd in the amount of $414,038.34 in payroll for the weeks of February 13th through February 26th in the amount of $1,448,893.93.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second.
The motion is a second, to allow the claims and payroll, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Item 12.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the purchase of a golf course chemical sprayer for the Parks Department, recommending the bid be awarded to Van Wall Equipment Company of Rock Island, Illinois, for the purchase of a 2017 John Deere HD300 chemical sprayer in the amount of $43,350.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance declaring wastewater treatments 2003 range as surplus and allow for disposal.
Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 13.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the 2017 fire hydrant purchases, recommending extending the 2016 contract with Zimmer and Francesca Inc. of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $43,848.16.
Motion to approve the contract's extension as recommended and authorized purchase for items 13 and 14.
Second.
The motion for items 13 and 14, and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 15.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a lease agreement with James Coin for farming on city-owned property on Big Island for a total of $7,020 for 2017.
Motion to approve the lease agreement as recommended, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 16.
Report from the Fire Department regarding a user agreement with Bryser LLC of Warrenville, Illinois, for a web-based inspection reporting service.
Move to approve the user agreement as recommended, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 17.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding proposals from EnviroNet Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $19,250 for professional environmental services for four sites, 2101 and 2117 11th Street, 2252 24th Street, 1136 2nd Street, and 106 4th Street.
Move to approve the engagement of EnviroNet, Inc., for the scope of their reference projects as recommended, and authorize execution of the documents by the city manager.
Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 18.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a special ordinance amending Chapter 4, Article 7, Section 4-158 of the Code of Ordinances, as it relates to the authority of the chief building official over administrative judgments.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments?
Could we have Tom Ayers come up, please? So, for those of us here and at home, I mean, this is, seems like a significant change, but could you explain where this comes?
Actually, it's not. It's been the practice for many decades, long before I came to work for the city. And as the city attorney is working his way through the ordinances and cleaning up things, he brought it to my attention and said, you know, technically, fine is money owed the city and whatnot, and so several of the sitting aldermen are aware of different cases that came to their attention where, when there was substantial compliance with some problems that the amount of the fine was reduced significantly. And as I said, that was the practice long before I came here. Unfortunately, it was never documented anywhere that we could discover, and so the city attorney recommended that we bring this to the council to properly codify the past and continuing practice.
True. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And really, allowing for this practice is a benefit to the city and to our residents that do find themselves in these circumstances because then they're able to work with staff and not necessarily be bound to that.
Yes, that's exactly correct. It benefits the community, the citizens in the community.
And still with the understanding that if they're complying, you, they should...
Right, no change in our practice, but rather, we're making it legally proper to do that.
That it? Roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Tullner.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 19.
Report from the city clerk regarding a resolution approving the partial release of the listed executive session minutes.
Move to approve the partial release of the listed executive session minutes as recommended and adopt the resolution.
Second.
If a motion is second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Tullner.
Yes.
Motion approved. Okay, before we read item 20, I'm making a little change. We're taking the, uh, $20,000 for the Parks Department out of it until next week. The reason being that, uh, that was approved in 2016 for demolition of the, of the firehouse on Douglas Park. We want the money to go to the Parks Department, but we don't want it to be dedicated to any demolition of the, of the fire station. So, there will be a memo next week to declare that $20,000 going back to the Parks Department, but not tied to the demolition of a fire station, okay? Just so everybody has that clear. Okay, item 20.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2017 budget, recommending increasing the general fund by $156,352.2 and the Community Economic Development Fund by $493,576.91.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
If a motion is second, any questions or comments?
I'll just make a quick comment, since I didn't know the mayor was gonna do that, but I'm glad that he did, and I had, of course, some constituents ask about that. And I did want to say that, you know, our Parks Director is, is working on some potential plans for saving that fire station that are in the works, and we're hoping that those do come to fruition. But this was going to be a potential in case, you know, contingency in case those don't work out, but we are working through different options because we do want to see that building have, have a good home in the future.
And we just want to be sure that the Parks Department gets the $20,000.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Tullner.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 21.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the repair to the northwest corner of Third Avenue and 23rd Street in an agreement with Dingle Dine Properties LLC for maintenance of the parking area post-repair.
Move to approve the repair as recommended, direct staff to work with the city attorney to draft a development agreement, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second.
If a motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Tullner.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 22.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Augustana College to reduce the speed limit on 7th Avenue between 34th and 38th Streets to 20 miles per hour.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
I think this is an excellent thing to do, because too many people are speeding through that property, or what they do, they come up behind a slower car and try to push them through it. So, we definitely need to lower the speed limit and then maintain it and be sure that we manage it too, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think this is big too, especially with all the crosswalks there. And many times, Kai, I know you're right there, you know, you see, you know, people almost hit your students, and that's not a good thing. And, and working at a university across the river, we have a 20 to 25 mile speed limit through our campus front door, and so I appreciate you guys asking for that.
And hopefully, that will make people be mindful of being slow in the Longfellow School section, because I drive through there every day, and I've got, I've started where I honk at people when they fly by me, because people, because it's four lanes, they go through there going 40, and it's a 20 mile an hour speed limit. So, hopefully, it will make safer passage for all of our students.
Right, any other comments? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Item 23.
Report from the mayor regarding a reappointment to the Fire and Police Commission.
Move to approve the reappointment as recommended.
Second.
If a motion is a second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Item 24.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments to the Park and Recreation Board.
Motion to approve the reappointments as recommended for, and appointments as recommended for items 24 and 25.
Second.
If a motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Now, items 26 and 27, we have to pull off the agenda until next week. We have some information from the state that, uh, and these are, these events don't happen until May, but we have information from the state that they are, uh, actually raising their liability funds considerably for anybody that has an event when you close a street. So, we have to get back with these organizations and be sure they still want it to come forward, but the plan is to bring them forward again next week. We just want to check with them to be sure they want to do it. So, I'm pulling 26 and 27. Okay, item 28.
Report from the city clerk regarding an application from Jana Gallagher and Holly Sparkman to hold the 11th Annual Steve's Old Time Tap Spring Chaser 5K Run Walk on Saturday, April 29th, 2017, from 9:00 AM until noon, and a request for closure of 17th Street from 2nd Avenue to 3rd Avenue from 6:00 AM to noon.
Move to approve the event and street closure as recommended.
Second.
If a motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Item 29.
Report from the city clerk regarding an application from Steve's Old Time Tap to host an after-party for the Spring Chaser 5K Run Walk on Saturday, April 29th, 2017, from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM, to be held in the Stern Center parking lot, and a request for the waiver of the permit fee.
Move to approve the event and waive the permit fee as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if noise complaints are received.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Motion approved. Item number 30.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Gunche's Rock Island to have entertainment outside in their parking lot for one day only on Saturday, March 18th, 2017, from 8:00 AM to midnight at 2107 4th Avenue, and a request to sell alcohol outside in the fenced-in area.
Move to, go ahead.
Move to approve the requests for outdoor entertainment and outdoor alcohol sales as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if noise complaints are received.
Second.
If a motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Item 31, other business, council members.
Um, Chief Van Hees, is he here today?
Yep.
Yeah, he is. He just, he just walked back here.
Oh, okay. Um, I just wanted to make a request here, Chief, publicly. I know, uh, actually, Alderman Hodel here just kind of alluded to it in her comments, but, um, you know, I've been living on 7th Avenue for a number of years now, and, uh, usually, this time of year, when, um, the springtime starts to warm up, when we get that first big warm weekend, uh, the motorcycles are out full force and the, uh, the cars are moving faster than usual. Um, and I just didn't know if there's anything we could do to coordinate, uh, with the, uh, state police, uh, for a big, uh, weekend and just push it hard at the start of the season, and get a bunch of tickets out there, just 'cause, um, it seems like it's kind of getting a little worse every year. And I'm just concerned, having seen an accident last, uh, last summer, I was in my backyard when a car went flying through the intersection at, uh, 7th Avenue, 44th Street, and T-boned a vehicle there. Um, they're just moving too fast, and I didn't know if there's anything we could do in coordination